All right, I'll call to order the reg renee, the Perry Municipal Authority for November 4th, 2013, at 6:16. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Paul.
Here. We do have a quorum present. This time, I'd like to invite Councilman Brett Nation, if you would, to lead us in our prayer.
That's great. Father, we thank you so much for the honor of being able to come and serve this city. Lord, we ask that you would give us wisdom, that you'd guide and lead us in every decision, every thought, everything that we have. Lord, we pray for the citizens of this city, that you would just bless them. And, Father, we thank you for that, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay. At this time, we'll move to the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda tonight. That's the minutes from our last gathering.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda. Will be discussion before going to a vote? Scene done. Votes in order.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now, comments from those assembled. Item number four. Anybody who wish to make comments not on our PMA agenda, we'll take those from you. Comments from those assembled? Comments from those assembled? Scene done. We'll move to item number five. Proclaimations, connotations, reports, and inquiries of the governing body. Going once, twice. All right. We'll move to item number six. Item number six is a presentation by Dr. Blaine Reely of Monsoon Consultants on Sanitary Sewer Improvement Master Plan, discussion by the trustees, and whether to accept the report and direct action as deemed appropriate. Authority members, you will remember well, I'm sure, that there's been plenty of discussion around this table related to our sanitary sewer system, and the fact that it is, most all of it is 50 years of age or older, and we have increasing problems with it. This body contracted with Dr. Reely to perform a study, and he's here with the results of that study. So I will turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you. This will be a first shot at high-tech tonight here. So hopefully, something will show up on the television here in a minute. In the meantime, what I'm gonna do is kind of just hand out one of the work products that came about as the result of our study. Basically, and if we could get the first slide... Basically, we started from scratch and went through the Perry sanitary sewer system, literally from bottom to top. I think we looked down and inspected every manhole that we could find, which there's something over 600 of them. We evaluated the system from a structural integrity perspective, from a hydraulic perspective, from a regulatory perspective. And I'm just gonna go through kind of the sequence of events that we went through quickly, and also the primary findings in summary form tonight, and then they'll be followed up with a final report that'll have all the needed grading in it. Okay. Next slide. So let me, first of all, tell you about the sanitary sewer system. As the mayor said, most of the sanitary sewer system in this is more than 50 years old. In fact, a big part of it is approaching and maybe even surpassing 100 years old. Design life on these systems are typically considered to be somewhere between 20 and 50 years. So a big part of our system is beyond what we would consider the end of its design life. But don't get nervous. Things are still working pretty well. You've got somewhere over 200,000 feet or almost 40 miles of pipe in the ground that comprises your sanitary sewer system. Pipes range from 6 inches to about 24 inches, and you've got somewhere right around 650 manholes. So for a city this size, it's a large system, and we get in to see some of the exhibits, you'll kind of get a feel for why that is. We're really spread out in an east-west direction. Like I said, the majority of the system is old. Some of it, especially here in the downtown area, is approaching 100 years or more. The system generally is dominated by topography in our area. So basically wastewater flows from the west towards the east, and then kind of from the south back up towards the northeast. And this I found interesting. Over the history of Perry, there's been at least three different wastewater treatment plants. The existing plant right now is located north and east of the city. Our study focused on the collection system, so the pipes and the manholes, and not particularly on the wastewater treatment plant. This is a plan view of the sanitary sewer system. It's a little bit difficult to see, I suppose, but it's an aerial photographic base. We used the aerial photography that was recently provided by pictometry, so it's very recent, all indexed spatially to the photography. So what that means is that should the city desire, we can import that directly into your pictometry database. The system is generally bounded by that black line. You can kind of see off to the right-hand side, the main part of town, and then it extends, the sewer system extends all the way out to I-35 and beyond, serving the commercial park and the industrial park. And also, service extends down to 77 and I-35, including sooner corners across the way. Most of the western part, pretty much from 15th Street West, is relatively new, in really good condition as far as the condition of the manholes, condition of the pipe. We found very, very few, if any deficiencies or defects, on the newer part of the system. And again, on the northern part, north of the Whitefield, up around the Country Club, and the newer subdivisions up there, again, everything that looked to be installed was done very well and in good condition. So most of our concern and things that I'm gonna talk about are really kind of focused around the downtown and then north of, north of, between 15th Street and Boundary Street. Okay, next slide. So basically, the purpose of the study was to do a few things. First of all, to go out and basically figure out what our system's comprised of. You know, where do the pipes go? How big are they? How do they interconnect? It's not uncommon that these things become a complicated hydraulic network, and that's such is the case here in Perry. Just over the years, things get kind of expanded a little bit here, a little bit there. And so anyway, we pulled all that together. We've got that built up, both in the form of the utility atlas and mapping, that we can make available in any format you guys would like, and also in a hydraulic model as well, so that we can evaluate changes as they're considered, both new development and maintenance or capital replacement. So we physically inventoried and inspected the whole system. We evaluated, the purpose of the study, to evaluate the flow characteristics of the system, basically, you know, what happens under dry weather conditions, normal conditions, and what happens under wet weather, rainfall conditions. To do that, in a minute, I'll explain what we did to take a look at that. We evaluated the condition of the sanitary sewer system based on visual inspections and photography. We developed a hydraulic model of the system. We identified the infrastructure defects and improvement strategies, and we developed a master plan for the system, which can be used both for maintenance purposes and also for expansion consideration. Okay, next slide. So here's the scope. It's pretty, fairly self-explanatory. Basically, the big pieces included a lot of field work, flow monitoring, and I'll get into some slides here in a minute to kind of talk about the results of that, hydraulic modeling, system evaluation, and then a conditions assessment. Next slide. Okay, so let's talk first about flow monitoring and the concept of dry weather flow versus wet weather flow. Again, a sanitary sewer, for those of you that haven't thought about it, is a series of pipes that are connected by manholes. Under normal conditions, let's assume that there's no groundwater and there's no surface water, i.e. rainfall and flood water. You know, normally, the wastewater from a house or business goes into the pipe, flows down to the wastewater treatment system, is treated, and effluent is discharged. A real common problem is that other water makes it into the sanitary sewer system, surface water or groundwater. Groundwater, if it makes its way into the sanitary sewer system, is called infiltration. Surface water, if it makes it into the sanitary sewer system, is called inflow. And the way we evaluate whether or not we have inflow, whether or not we have inflow or infiltration, is we look at, we monitor the flows in the sanitary sewer system, and we monitor those flows during dry weather conditions, which over the past two years, we've had plenty of that. And then, and then here recently, in the past six or seven months, we've got wet weather conditions. We were about, we were able to evaluate both conditions. So the good news for Perry is that dry weather conditions, we saw very, very little evidence of infiltration. And obviously, the groundwater table is lower during those periods, but even under, as things have gotten wetter, we don't see a lot of infiltration. And that's really good news, because that's the expensive part to fix. If you have infiltration, that moisture comes in a lot of times during all the joints along the pipe. So we don't think we have much of that, if any. Well, I'm sure we have a little bit of it, but not much. But wet weather, but inflow, we do have. And this is, this is an example. We installed portable flow monitors throughout the system, looking for, within each part of the system, looking to see what would happen when it rains, basically, you know, does the flow pick up? If the flows pick up after it rains, we have evidence that we have inflow. This is just an example of the flow data from one of those flow monitors. The kind of the pink shading there, it's a period of about 10 days. The pink shading there is a period of rainfall. Over that period, we got 1.9 inches of rainfall. I think this is early May of this year. And you can see the, that blue line, that spiky blue line, is the flow within the pipe. So you can see that it spikes sort of right after the rainfall. So that tells us that we got rain. It takes a little while to kind of find its way into whatever openings there are that lets it into the sanitary sewer system. In this case, it looks to be primarily manholes. The flows, and then the rain stops, and after a while, the flow within the sewer goes back down to kind of normal. Okay. So that's indicative of an inflow condition, and we saw that in most areas within kind of the downtown, that 15th Street, Boundary Street, I'll just call it the older part of town, okay? Next slide. So that slide that I just showed you was an example of the results of it on a particular line within the system. This is the flow monitoring that's been taking place out at the lift station. And for those of you that aren't familiar with the way Perry's sanitary sewer system works, pretty much, not pretty much, everything. Everything flowed, all the wastewater flows out to the northeast end of town, and there's a lift station out there. All the wastewater flows to that lift station, and then from the lift station, it's pumped back to the wastewater treatment plant, which is about a half a mile, quarter mile, half a mile south of there. So all water has to, all wastewater has to go through the lift station to get to the wastewater treatment plant. This is the flows for a year. They're daily, basically, the record is daily average flows for a little over 12-month period, starting, I think, in October and ending in October, or something like that, if I remember right. So the blue line, the big jagged blue line, are flows, okay? It's kind of a little bit hard to see, but there are bars underneath it that are, from here, kind of pinkish. Those are rainfall. So everywhere you see sort of a pink bar, we've got some rainfall. If you take a look at that big spike in the middle there, and I forget what month that is, but if you take a look at that big spike, we got something, that's the time that we got about 6 inches of rainfall in about 24, 30 hours, something like that. So you can see what happens. We get a big, a big rainfall event, and we get a big increase in flow at the, at the lift station, and that's related to inflow of surface water, rainfall into our system. It basically tripled the average flow to the peak flow, went up by a factor of about three. Okay, next slide. These are gonna be really hard to see, but what I'll, I'll just explain what it is. So we basically have problems that are, that can be fixed, that will help take care of that inflow problem. And before I get into that, let me tell you why inflow a problem. First of all, you're treating, it costs money to treat wastewater. If you, if you increase your flow by a factor of three for a period of time, you're treating three times, you still have to treat it all. So you're treating three times the amount of wastewater that you would have had you not had an inflow problem. So it's a treatment cost problem, for one thing. Probably even more important than that, though, is that we have, there's evidence out there that when we get these big flows, like that big spike that we saw after 6 inches of rain, we see evidence that the, the volume of water within the pipe exceeded the capacity of the system to carry it. And basically, a sewer system is a pipe connected to a manhole, and that manhole's open to, open to the air. So if we get more flow running through that pipe than the pipe can handle, it will overflow, okay? If it overflows, then we're releasing wastewater, you know, out into the environment. It's called an illegal discharge. I don't think that there's, I don't think anybody in town, because the manholes that we saw, ones of this are way up in the woods along a couple of creeks. I don't think any of the city staff knew this was going on. At this point, we're gonna show them what manholes we, you know, we'd like to monitor. But in the event that we do get a release, our permit, it's sort of okay to release under the conditions of your discharge permit. You just have to report it. And if you get a history of, you know, repeated releases, then the regulatory agency, in this case DEQ, will go, you know what, you need to kind of fix that. And in order to fix that, they will, a lot of times, give you a notice of violation. It won't happen the first time, it won't happen the second time, but if there's a pattern.
I see you cringing, but yeah.
But, so that's sort of the situation, why we're concerned about it. So how do we fix it? Remember, I told you that we have something like 640 manholes in the system? And we've found evidence, well, inflows getting into the system, basically through, the primary way we saw inflow getting into the system is through manholes that are situated in low spots. So let's just say, for the sake of an argument, and this isn't the case here, but say you had a, you know, in the middle of a football field was a low spot, right, and the manhole happened to be right in that low spot. When water, when rainfall comes, you get enough rainfall that you get water flowing over the surface towards that low spot, if the manhole happens to be there, water will pound over it. And if the manhole, say, rim or lid isn't tight, or the collar is deteriorated, or for whatever reason, water will find its way into that manhole. And it doesn't take much of an opening to let a lot of water into, into a manhole to create this inflow condition. We found evidence of about 40, 40 to 50 manholes that we categorized as a high potential for inflow. Okay. So that's 40 to 50 out of 650. So that's not a huge percentage, but those 40 to 50 certainly could cause, could be the cause or the conduit for allowing a lot of the water to get in there. So one of our recommendations, when I get to the end, will be, let's take care of those. The good news is, we're only really talking about the surface of those manholes, the part coming out of the ground. Sometimes, it's gonna be elevating the rim a couple of feet, putting a, you know, a riser on the manhole. There's a lot of different ways to get there. That, we believe, will take care of a big part of this inflow problem, and probably result in elimination of any of these illegal bypasses. Okay. So anyway, at this particular exhibit, because it's kind of hard to see on the, on the screen, you can see a bunch of red dots. Kind, I hope you can. Those red dots are the locations of these manholes that have a high inflow potential. And if you can kind of get a feel for it, they're scattered about. They're not all in one, like, location. So they're kind of scattered about that whole central region of the city, of the sewer system. Again, individually, they're not a lot of, wow, I don't want to say that. Individually, it's not a big cost item. You had 50 of them up, and it's gonna add up to something more than I can afford, but, but not a huge capital project. Okay, next slide. All right, so the, when we went through and the results of the condition assessment, oh, well, good news. Okay, so what we found is that, based on our hydraulic modeling, the entire system under dry weather flows is, is hydrolically adequate. You have no part of your system that is too small to have flows under dry weather conditions get through. Okay. So that's good news, because if we would've found a whole bunch of undersized pipes, you would not have been happy with what I was gonna tell you next. So the good news is, hydraulically, your system not only is adequate, it's adequate for significant existing growth. Okay, we looked at, we actually took, started ratcheting up the normal flows to a form of 3X, and we still weren't seeing any real significant limitation hydraulically. Okay, so that's really good news. We do have evidence of insufficient hydraulic capacity under wet weather flows, and again, that's not system-wide, that's just in a couple locations. So we can, we can take care of that, I think. Wet weather flow, that's already kind of went through. In addition to the inflow source manholes, we also found a couple of other conditions that should be looked at or should be addressed. One is, we found something like 30 flooded manholes. And the reason, though, they're flooded, is there's a blockage in the pipe downstream. It's a partial blockage. So if it was a complete blockage, you, we would've seen, you know, effluent spewing out of the manhole over a period of time. Wasn't the case. We have a partial blockage in roughly 30 manholes. What that means is that, well, we got a partial blockage, so it's gonna, when I get to the recommendations, I'll kind of suggest how to go about addressing those things. And then, lastly, we found manholes, some manholes, something like 40 of them, in poor condition. Okay. And, you know, manhole, over, in the old days, including times when I was alive, manholes were built out of brick, for the most part. In the last 20, 30 years, manholes, most manholes have been built out of concrete, usually precast concrete. And then we found other, other materials that have been used to build manholes in the city, some very interesting ones, by the way. But as far as manholes that are in poor condition of that 650, we found about 40 of them. Most of those are a result of hydrogen sulfide gas attacking either concrete or brick. And you get hydrogen sulfide gas when, typically, when you get, you get a lot of agitation of the water in the manhole. Those happen when you get a pipe coming up high, you know, with the rest of the manhole, base of the manhole down here, that free-falling water agitates it and releases gas, and that gas, the hydrogen sulfide gas attacks concrete pretty quickly, as a matter of fact. The fix on those things are two, usually. One is, you wanna, you wanna do away with that cascading water, so you install what's called a drop inlet, an internal drop inlet, not very expensive, fairly easy to do. And then you'll, you can rehabilitate that manhole. You don't necessarily have to replace it. You can come back in and put a liner in it. Okay. So we found about roughly 40 of those. So basically, in general, the sanitary sewer system is functional, in functional condition, and can adequately convey the flows out to the wastewater treatment plant. We didn't find any, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not suggesting that we found any big capital improvement projects. This is a lot of little stuff, but a lot of little stuff. Okay. All right, next slide. This, these are just some of the, this is the, these are the green dots. I think these are the poor-conditioned manholes, the ones that probably need to be looked at for lining and rehabilitation, and maybe drop inlet installation. And again, they're the green dots, and they're sort of scattered throughout, throughout the central part of town. Next slide. These little lavender magenta dots are the, are the flooded manholes, okay, indicative of blockage, or at least partial blockage, in the pipeline downstream. And again, kind of scattered throughout that same part of town. Next slide. Okay, so we took a look at, the city's developed, with input from us, the city's developed kind of a proposed capital improvement project list, a few pipelines to be replaced or rehabilitated. So what I, there's an exhibit behind here in a minute, but what I did was I looked, I graphically shown all of those projects, those proposed projects, and also, within the last 10 years or so that I've been working with the city, we've done some sanitary sewer projects. And I wanted to be able to show you where those are. We've done the Leo Park, replaced the, down in the, over in the Leo Park area, some sanitary sewer over there, and eliminated a aerial crossing of a creek. It was a, it was a, we have three more of those, by the way, but we eliminated one. Those are good to eliminate. We eliminated that. We, and then we did use the REIT grant to replace about 1,000 feet, I think 980 feet of pipe there, just north of the high school. And the CDPG project that we are getting ready to proceed with ties into that. Okay. And then we've extended sewer out to the commercial park, and we're getting ready to extend it all the way out to the industrial park, so that's a project. And then there was a short piece of sewer there up around Country Club that was replaced. I think it's been replaced, it's been permitted now. And then the second are all the list of projects that are kind of on the books for consideration in, in the future. First two of which are funded under the CDPG, maybe two or three are funded under the CDPG project.
Two and three.
Okay. Next slide. Okay, again, this is, there's, there's red areas and there's pink areas. The pink are projects that were recently completed, and went recently, within the last 10 years. And then the red are the projects that are being proposed in the future, some of which are already programmed with CDPG funding, and others which are, which are to be considered for the future. They're all projects that we would, we would support. They're good projects. And again, they fall within that central, central part of the sewer system. Pretty much, anytime you want to spend money in there, it's a good idea. Next slide. And this, this is just everything thrown on top of one another. So there's a bunch of green, purple, and whatever the other colored dots are. Those are all the different manholes that I talked about, the three different types and locations, with the existing and proposed sewer projects. So you could kind of put it all in context. And if anyone has any desire, this thing's available, we can make available to anybody who wants to look at it, sir. Next slide. Okay, so here's the recommendations. Again, didn't find any really acute problems, things that, you know, boy, we gotta run out and do this tomorrow. What we found are sort of this chronic case of aging infrastructure. And so how do you approach it, you know, that you can get your hands around it, spend some money, and do some good in the near term? What we would recommend as priority number one is rehabilitate or replace the manholes that are probable sources of rainwater inflow. Let's say there's about 50 of those. For the most part, you wouldn't replace them. Some, the only time you'd replace them is they happen to be also like one of the poor-conditioned manholes. It's basically just making the upper part of the manhole watertight and elevating it above high water. A lot of these are along banks of creeks and drainage. The next thing that we would recommend is, where we have flooded manholes and evidence of partial blockage in pipelines, we would recommend that the downstream lines be cleaned and inspected using closed-circuit TV. Let's see what that blockage is, and if, and it's likely, and at least in some cases, those blockages are gonna require a point repair. Sometimes it's a joint that, you know, that is faulted off. Sometimes it's a, it's a service that just, you know, gets, penetrates the pipe. Whatever it is, there's about, you know, roughly 30 locations like that. Let's go clean them out. Let's TV them. Let's figure out what the problem is, and then do a point repair to fix that. Next, let's rehabilitate, you know, the manholes that have structural problems. This can be something that can be done, you know, a few every year. I mean, it's something that'd be set up in, kind of the O&M budget. None of the, most of these have been in bad condition for, you know, a lot of years already. Let's, let's just do a program where we fix a few at a time, as the budget will permit. And this is a little bit, another kind of long-range, protracted recommendation, but it's implement a program of cleaning and doing TV inspection of all the pipes within, basically, that area bounded by 15th Street, Whitefield, Boundary, and 77. That whole area of town that I kind of... That whole area of town that I kind of am referring to as the central region, it's got, you know, it's got all of our older infrastructure in it, you know, there's things we'll find, right now, it's functioning, you know, okay. And that's the kind of thing, we don't got to do, we don't have to do it all at once, just to start a program, we're doing a little bit at a time. It's like peening the Golden Gate Bridge, and once we're done with it, we'll have to come back and start again. But, and I should point out, it's, that's not an uncommon activity within a utility apartment in a, in a city. You know, a lot of cities adopt this, it's preventative maintenance, basically. Again, we would recommend proceeding with the replacement projects that are kind of already programmed, they're all good projects, you know, as funds become available. I don't think any of them are, are, you know, sort of health and safety threatened critical right now, but they're good to do. And then, and then, lastly, we have three existing aerial creek crossings. These are the pipes that go across creeks that are on, you know, you've seen them on rusty old bridges. None of them seem to be leaking, they all seem to be functioning okay, the problem is that when they fail in a flood event, they fail catastrophically. And when, and, you know, you get a flood, they break, and that whole part of the sanitary sewer system is discharging raw sewage into the creek, and you can't get it fixed or rewired real quickly after that. So, it's a problem, it's just an avoidance philosophy. And these days, you can replace them with an inverted siphon, and Perry's a unique position that has access to, you know, horizontal directional drilling that make that, every other city that I know would be envious of that situation. So, those are the recommendations. Like I said, the Atlas books, I haven't even had a chance to show Matt yet, but that's something that is, something that they've been wanting for a long time, and it's indexed to the new photographs, so I think it's something that's going to be a hall. Questions?
What is an inverted siphon?
An inverted siphon is, basically, if you have a gravity line, you know, coming in and going out here, and you've got this obstacle to get under, you push a big inverted loop of pipe, and the pressure, the hydraulic head on this side pushes everything through, and it daylights on this side.
It pushes it from, like, sedimental film to the bottom?
You design it so that under normal flows, it has a minimum velocity, flow velocity of about two feet per second, and that's self-cleansing, it'll keep everything cleaned out. And we also design them these days where there are multiple barrels, so that if one plugs, there'll be a, you know, kind of a backup barrel until you can get in there and clean it out.
These dates on here, is that supposed to be the four, next year, or is it, they have thirteen on it, finish?
I don't, oh!
Should that have been fourteen?
Ten thirty-one, to finish the project?
Mm-hmm.
No, it was due on the thirty-first.
Are these, is this study available?
Yes.
Okay, either online or hard copy or whatever?
It'll be a PDF, right?
Yeah, I'd like to see it, thank you.
Yep.
When you talk about inflow water getting into our sewer system, what about our gutters, like, street gutters and stuff like that, is that considered the same thing, or is that a different?
No, those are, that's a storm sewer system, and for the most part, well, not, those two systems are separate, okay? There are, you know, it's not impossible that there's an interconnect somewhere, we didn't really, if, if the storm sewer would be directly connected to the sanitary sewer, we would be, we would see significantly greater and quicker response times.
That's what I didn't understand, I kind of thought it wasn't greater than it was, but I didn't understand that they were, I, I thought they were the same, I didn't realize they were separate.
Separate systems, right.
Where's our, where's our wastewater like that, our storm sewer drain, where's that discharged?
Storm sewer, just to the creeks, yeah.
In gallons, if I remember correctly, that we process about a million gallons a day?
Waste Water Treatment Plant, average flow is probably in the, it's kind of two-fifty to three-fifty range, average dry weather flow.
Really?
And then, those peaks, and, and it'll ramp up in kind of the wetter seasons to, to, you know, four to five hundred, half a million gallons a day. And then, those peaks that you saw were a little over a million, so it did more than double.
Blaine, have you put any cost estimates together on the recommendations?
I haven't yet, and that's kind of the last thing to do, and I kind of, I want to be able to present, because what we're, typically, we would have this list of capital improvement projects that you can have a start and an end, and, you know, on pipeline starts and ends, and you can get a real hard cost on that. What I wanted to do was talk to you and kind of go through this and say, what I'm really talking about is kind of a, setting aside or setting up kind of an annual, you know, preventive maintenance, kind of repair and preventive maintenance budget, and that's kind of almost, it's almost like you tell me how much you want to spend, and I can tell you how much we can get done of that. But, so that's, I was struggling a little bit of how to throw costs in here, but I'll do that now.
It's kind of good news, bad news, the good news is, we don't have a catastrophic problem, bad news is, we do have a problem, but it can be addressed in a budget, well, method year after year to take care of.
Right.
We're pretty lucky in that situation.
Yeah, it's kind of, yeah, it's more of like a long haul thing than a short, than a crisis.
Well, the first thing that we need to point out is, great use of the pictometry system that we all bought and paid for, as just an example of how this can be used, to be, the overlays that you did, I think it's, I think it's a good piece of work. And thank you for spending the time on it to do the research and study. Authority members, you'll remember, when we were running through our budgeting last year, this was a lot of discussion that we wrapped up with, that, you know, that we didn't do a whole lot of detailed budgeting as it related to the sewer system, and we talked about how that's a very difficult thing to spend money on, because the citizens don't see it. It's all underground. And while we know it comes with a very expensive price tag, it makes it difficult for us to sit down and budget those sort of things. So, I think what we're looking for tonight is, one, receive the presentation from Blaine, now you all have a good idea from our engineer of where the issues are, you know, they've been identified now. And then, over the course of months, building up into this next budget, it would be incumbent on all of us to really identify how, what, how much of these chunks we want to bite off and get it taken care of. I like the idea of the slow, methodical fix, and that's going to have to survive a lot of us. I mean, we're talking about years before, you know, and I like your analogy of the Golden Gate Bridge, you know, we'll take years bringing this system up to a quality system, and immediately have to turn right around and start all over again. But it's good that we've identified where the problems we are, I think that we've been shooting in the dark, a lot of times, we, we're kind of a reactionary around this table, we fix it when it's an obvious break. And this gives us now an opportunity to forecast and plan to make these repairs. So, unless somebody wants to, wants to provide more direct, a more direct approach to what we do, I think the general consensus is, is that as we build towards our next year's budget, that we now have identified, and in a nice, in a nice approach, of the most important areas we need to concentrate on, provide, figure out what monies we have available, kick that back to Blaine, and see what that will fix, and then track that over, over a period, period of time.
That'd be perfect, yeah.
One quick question that I had before we release you. Coming from a non-engineer background, a lot of times, we have given the excuse of, when we have breaks, it seems to be, it comes from large fluctuations in weather. We only come from a dramatic cold to a dramatic hot, or vice versa, or a dramatic dry to a dramatic wet. Can this too, is it true that it can put pressure from a structural standpoint on our, on our systems because of its age?
Very much so, and it's because we, you know, we have a very clay-rich soil around here, and so, when it gets, when that clay gets wet, it expands, I mean, that's what makes it sticky. And then, when it, when it dries, it contracts and shrinks, and that's why you get those big cracks in it. Well, you can imagine when you've got, you know, let's say, a manhole, and it's, it's, you know, in contact and surrounded by, you know, clay soil, and as it, as that soil wets and dries, it's expanding, which means it's pressing, and then, when it contracts, it's pulling, and over years of those cycles, it just kind of pulls things apart. The farther a pipe is buried, the less likely that phenomenon will happen.
Well, I really, when I ask that question, I really have two fears, you know, and the first fear is, is that now that we have a plan, and we, and I'm sure that you all are going to be adhering to that, to that plan, especially allocate dollars for that, we could see breaks and more emergent issues that we have to fix that were never identified on, on the plan, and that's a very real possibility, and so, dollars will have to be really reallocated to fix the immediate emergency, which would send us back even further. So, that's one concern, that we all ought to be aware of potentials there, that we could have issues that weren't identified in this, you know, in this study. The second issue I have is, you know, this, this certainly wasn't a cheap study, it was needed. That, you know, the concern I have is that we get to build habit of, hey, we've got it, let's place it on the shelf, and let it draw, let it draw dust. And I would just hope, and caution us all, that we, you know, make this a very real working document, that we're, that we're constantly, you know, paying attention to, because it's, it's a very real, real issue with this community.
Absolutely, and I, and I would also add to that, that the, you know, some of the best intelligence that we can get to, to affect what decisions you use for moving forward is the continued, you know, maintenance requirements, you know, if you begin to see thing, I mean, like I say, these things are, tend not to be really acute problems, so you're, you're going to get telltales, you're going to get advance warnings of problems, and to track those, you know, and I think now we have the, a database to do that, to track those, so that we can start looking at, wow, we've had to go back seventeen different times on this segment of pipe to, you know, to open up a blockage, that's, that tells us something.
Well, you know, Meredith, especially when we get into the budgeting, you know, it's going to be very important that you all, you know, set out in the O and M, you know, what, what some of these, you know, requirements are, and not let that slip through, you know, get washed around, you know, because, you know, because we need something that some other, other department is very greedy. Other questions or thoughts or comments related to like that?
I have a question, we just finished a sewer project. How big was that, and like, how many manholes were included, and what did that cost?
Which one are we talking about?
I think it was around.
Are you talking about Country Club?
Yeah.
It was about, there was two manholes, I want to say, it was less than five hundred feet.
Two eighty?
Yeah.
Two eighty-five, somewhere in there?
Yeah, and, and that'll have the number, I don't know what it cost.
When you say two eighty-five, is that?
Two hundred and eighty-five linear feet, two manholes.
I'm talking about the cost, what did that cost?
The cost, I'm not sure about the cost of the, the material, but we had basically ten days worth of labor involved in it for three to four guys.
They use city forces? It can typically, for budgeting purposes, it's, for budgeting purposes, including things like the pavement replacement and everything that usually goes along with one of these things, usually, it's about, kind of planned on about a hundred and twenty-five dollars a foot, so it's expensive. And that includes the manholes and pavement replacement and all that other stuff, and reconnecting the services, so. Yeah, I mean, when you replace a piece of sanitary sewer, you have to, you know, remember that this is a, you know, a live piece of infrastructure, so it usually means you're bypass pumping and keeping it, you know, keeping it live while you're doing it, and it's about, yeah, it's, it's not an inexpensive endeavor.
Other questions or comments, thoughts, is the general direction acceptable to the, to the body? Yes. Very well, Blaine, thank you very much for your report. Okay, we'll move to item number seven, new business, see, new business needs to come before the BMA. See none, we'll move to item number eight.
Motion to adjourn.
With motion to second to adjourn, roll call, please.
Yes. Moxley, Johnson, Norman, Nation, Wade, Warner, Paul.
Okay, I'll call to order the regular meeting in the City Council with the City of Perry, and we're number four, two thousand and thirteen, seven oh one, roll call.
Stroller. Here. Moxley.
Here.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Paul.
Here. We do have a quorum present, this time, move to item number one, the consent agenda. Items wishing to be removed, we'll take those from you. Move to approve.
Second.
We have motion second to approve, the consent agenda is presented this evening, will there be discussion? Comment? Now the.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item number four, comments from those assembled, anybody wishing to make comments on items not on our city council agenda, we'll take those from you. Comments from those assembled. Comments from those assembled. See none, we'll move to item number five, proclamations, commendations, reports, inquiries of the government See none, I would ask, look, anything on this agenda tonight is important, particularly to somebody. We do have a gentleman in the audience this evening that has driven from out of town to be a part of this agenda item, and if you all are willing, I would like to move up item number nine. Item number nine, so that we could consider his action and allow him to return home, if, if there's no objection? All right, item number nine is to consider approval of a real estate contract with Gateway Pipeline LLC, an Oklahoma Limited Liability Company, for the purchase of parcel number eight, which is a five-point-two acre tract of real property lying south of Crowe Business and east-west access road in Perry Industrial Park, for thirty thousand dollars. We have here tonight Mike Congdon with Gateway Pipeline, this is a group that is very, very excited about, in fact, the enthusiasm level is, is refreshing, about locating here in Perry. He was shown the, the property available out in the industrial park, which certainly is exactly why we purchased it, and his company has a desire to purchase five-point-two acres for the sale price that we have here, you know, for a little over five thousand dollars an acre. They immediately are talking about wanting to, to get started on some construction project out there, should we be agreeable to sell that to them. Mike, I'll let you fill in the blanks quickly, if you would like, and what's the council wants to do with it?
I appreciate you moving it up, maybe I can get the second hand for the game. Gateway Pipeline's been a business a number of years, and like most pipeline companies, especially right now, and as y'all well know, are laying lines everywhere, and we do a lot of work for Devon, Chesapeake, and other companies. Right now, both of the work, we have quite a bit going on up toward Morrison, that area, we have quite a bit in Mulholland Crescent area, we got a number of projects pending up near Blackwell. But right now, our, our main yard is down in Craig, Oklahoma, and the logistics is just not there. So, we got to looking for property, and this was about as centrally located as we could get, and because it, hauling that equipment down the highway, you know, to send a truck to Craig, Oklahoma, and back takes all day, and if he's working over here by Morrison, they can come in here and take care of business. We have a number of different companies, the pipeline is one of them. We also have an environmental company that comes in after we get done doing the pipeline, that does all the plumbing, and as per the landowner, we reseed wheat, rye, native grass, whatever they want, and they spray it, and that type of stuff. And just a side note, Blaine was saying, talking about your aerial deals, that, that most people are using the directional drill, we do that, so if that comes up, we, we have our own directional drill company that, when the pipeline goes out, yeah.
And in their brochure is a beautiful picture of a ditch which this equipment is doing it, so that's very good.
That was another factor, is, yeah, we have a number of pieces of ditch which equipment, so being right here for servicing parts is, is going to be a time, time saver And yeah, they'd like to, like to get the ball rolling and, and dump on it. And like I said, we, we're excited about it. So that's what we do.
Well, council, you all have all had an opportunity to read over the real estate contract. I guess we'll throw it out to, to questions or comments and see what you'd like to do with it.
I'd like to move to approve.
Second. We have a motion, I feel pretty good about this vote.
I like that. I like that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the real estate contract with Gateway Pipeline LLC for the purchase of parcel eight, which is a 5.2 acre tract of real property lying south of the Crowe Business, east and west access road in Perry Industrial Park for an amount of $30,000. Will there be continued discussion? Questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. I'm really happy that you finally realized what everybody in this area knows, that we're centrally located, we've got the best location in the state. So I just want to emphasize that.
Well, the boss commented that when I told him where it was, he's never even seen it. He's taken my word for it. But when I told him it was, you know, like one, three quarters of a mile off the interstate and we have access to the motels, because we have crews and stuff that works that don't live around here. All of our drivers, we don't do bulk fuel. So all of our drivers have cards where they can pull up to the truck stops and get the fuel out there sooner or wherever, right there handy. So I think it's a win-win for everybody to spend all our money here and of course go to Brahms and it's all good.
Well.
Glad to have you.
We, we have, we have a motion and a second. So if you'll hold your breath for just a few minutes, let's see what happens. Roll call please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes, and congratulations.
Very good. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, council members, for allowing that to take place. We'll get back on the original, original agenda schedule. We'll move to item number six, which is consider nominations and appoint of a member to fill Ward Three, seat two vacant position with the City Council. Appointed by ballot with the City Clerk to retain ballot forms. Council members, if you remember at our last gathering, we had two nominations from the floor. One was from, for Marvin Demet and the other one was for Clayton Dow. We have since been informed that Marvin has removed his name from consideration. I received that call earlier this morning. And so the name that we have presented tonight still remains with Clayton Dow. However, we are more than willing to accept any additional nominations. We have ballots. If there are no additional nominations, we'll do a heads up vote on, on appointing Clayton Dow. If there is an additional nomination, we'll add that to the ballot form. We'll pass them around and we'll make this as quick as we can. Additional nominations from the floor. Seen none, we'll act on the original motion and second for Clayton Dow from our last meeting, which I believe was Tim and Gordon, correct? Do you all, do you all maintain your, your motion and your second?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion before going to the vote? Seen none, votes in order. If you're for Clayton filling the, the unexpired term, you'll vote yes. If you're opposed, you'll vote no. Roll call.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner. Yes. Hall.
Yes. All right, we'll get Clayton, Clayton on board. Sounds good. Now we'll move to item number seven, comments from the City Manager. Mary, take off.
Last week, the City hosted what might have been the, one of the first sharing sessions that the City of Perry and the local tradesmen and general contractors have had. And we thought it was a very productive exchange of information. Mayor Hall was there to kick off the conversation. We had about 18 people, I think, in attendance. So we felt really good that, you know, that was, you know, I had really kind of thought maybe 10, you know, it would be a good, I was trying to kind of figure out what I would be happy with because we sent out over 40 invitations. So having 18 there, we had a good number of city staff people there who could hear and, you know, hear what was being said. And, you know, I'm just going to pick out a few of these, but, you know, what are general contractors allowed to do or not do? I mean, it's just that sort of, of a question. You know, maybe the permit fees could be based on the complexity of the job and not just have a standard fee, one thing for, you know, one minor project or, and then the same fee for doing an entire house. You know, so, you know, the, create a what can you do in your own home booklet? Or when do I need, when does a homeowner need a permit? What do we need a permit for?
That would be very good.
Yes. And so we felt like we really had, you know, a good opportunity to, you know, have a, a good dialogue and a, and everybody was very civilized, you know, it was, I thought everybody was, you know, very open and honest with the comments that they had and, you know, didn't hold back a lot, you know. And so I thought some, some really good questions came up. And so, you know, we've got our work cut out for us to respond and, and get some of these things done and back out to the, the tradespeople and the general contractors. But that way, hopefully, you know, improve communication and so that, you know, a, a better understanding of what the, the city's processes involve and, and looking at ways to simplify the process as well, so. And the only other thing I have is that the City of Perry does observe Veterans Day for, so we'll be, City Hall will be closed on November 11th, which is a week from today. And obviously, our 24/7 operations will be still working, police and fire and the people at the water and sewer plants and all that. So anyway, so City Hall will be closed on Monday and that's all I have.
Questions or comments, Mary, before we move on? Okay, well, thank you, Mary. We'll move to item number eight, where we have several items pertaining to zoning and planning. Item number eight A is to receive a recommendation from the Perry Planning Commission on the application of On-Q Marketing LLC in the City of Perry to rezone from R1, single-family residential to C2, general commercial. This is, and we have David Payne here to correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that, that this has received and gone through the processes and received approval from the Perry Planning Commission. And so this particular item A is just, is just a notice of, of, of the Perry Planning Commission's recommendation to, to approve the application. You'll actually approve the application, item B, if you so choose. Any questions or comments on the application? We should be very familiar with this. Okay, seen none, we'll move to item number eight B, which is consider approval of ordinance 2013-27 amending the zoning of a tract of property situated in Noble County. This is the property that we refer to by the, the On-Q Marketing and the City of Perry. You're being asked to approve the ordinance, which in fact changes the zoning from R1, single-family residential to C2, general commercial district, as recommended by the Perry Planning Commission.
Move to approve ordinance 2013-27.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the ordinance 2013-27. Will there be, will there be discussion? Discussion or comment? Everybody understand what you're voting on. Okay, roll call please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. Now we move to item number eight C, which is to receive a recommendation with the Perry Planning Commission on the application of Bill Price, owner and seller to Margie Janson, purchaser to rezone from C1, light commercial district to C2, general commercial district, the property located at 527 North Sixth Street here in Perry. And with that, I think I will turn it over to Dave Payne for you to give us your review, the Perry Planning Commission's review of the, of the proposal.
Okay.
Dave?
Thank you. Well, we reviewed a, a drawing that was presented to us. Jason McPary had looked the drawing over closely as well. And we did not have anyone in the meeting opposing the request. We had, we had two gentlemen come and talk to us about other interests, but they were not opposing what we were discussing. And we listened to the proposal, what their plans are, and we found no problems with it. They intend to keep it tidy. And we expressed our concerns with, because this property's been looked at before and has had, I would say, maybe a similar type business there that became a problem. But I believe that parties involved this time understand the concern and are prepared to keep it tidy and looking nuts. So we approved, recommend to the council that it be approved.
Gordon, question?
No, sir.
Questions or comments from, what you're being asked is, this is just, this is the section where we just recognize the action that the planning commission took. The action will be in the next agenda item. Questions or comments on the application? And we do have the parties represented here at the seat.
I had a comment.
Bill?
You did mention that we have seen this before.
Yes.
And I know that we, we denied it in the past. My problem with this is that, say that, say that we grant this change. Mr. Price owns a property at this time. If something falls through and the purchaser does not purchase a piece of property, then it's already been changed and we have no control over the piece of property.
We, and Jason, correct me if I'm wrong on this. There would still be a requirement for an occupancy permit, at which time the intended use would be reviewed and could be denied at that time. Is that correct? Yes. So it's not just a, a blanket, couldn't put a savage yard in there or, you know, it's going to be looked at no matter what. And in fact, this request still has to go through that process. The request or the agenda item in front of you is to rezone the property. We did look at the intended use, but Jason will look at that more closely when, as they proceed and make sure that they are following the guidelines.
If this review did include the, the site plan review?
Yes, it did.
For the, for this particular use?
Yes.
Are those drawings supposed to be to scale?
Bill, that would depend on what they're reproducing it with. It could have been to scale and they enlarged it to fit a sheet and it could blow the scale out.
Actually, my sheet was in a lovinger and I shrunk it down from yellow paper.
Yeah.
We discussed that and felt that the dimensions given were adequate enough for us to answer any questions that we had.
Something you can go without it?
Yes.
And what does that say?
Well, it actually says that it's supposed to be certified by an architect or an engineer. And it's, yeah, it's supposed to be at scale. But we haven't gotten many site plan submitted that have been, you know, consistent with that, other than, you know, certainly the one we got from Dollar General, you know, would have, would have met that standard. But we haven't, you know, I would say that the average one is not prepared by an engineer or architect and it's probably not the scale, therefore not the scale.
But it is the code that.
Yeah, the code does say.
And this wasn't done?
Oh, I don't believe so, yeah.
Didn't we pass a resolution just a couple of months ago about reapplying?
Yes, this one is longer. Even, even if this applied to that one, and it doesn't because the application was brought while we were considering that.
It would have been grandfathered.
It was, it's still more than a year.
The, the, the plan itself does depict the property correctly. The plan itself does show the improvements they intend to make. It is dimensioned, as, as indicated by our city clerk here, that they had to reduce to put it in a packet. I feel like it shows the property lines, it shows the setbacks, it shows the dimensions that are pertinent. It all adds up across the lot and to the street. I have no problem with it. The fact is that there are a lot of people in this community that has no access to an architect or an engineer because we have very few of those in this county. If indeed, we have an architect in this county. We only have one engineer I know that practices this type of engineering, and that's me. And I can't do this.
Can we change the code?
I agree.
We have, we have asked that that item be put on our next agenda because we feel that it is an unfair and unreasonable request. So we will be reviewing that.
Good.
This, this site plan is better than the first one we received on this property. Sorry to point that out.
That's very good.
And I'd say that they intend to remove some of the old concrete items in there. That was the light fixture pump station and replace that so they have adequate parking, adequate frontage on the building, which makes it almost impossible for them to display on the sidewalk or out in the parking area. So I, I think that in itself indicates that they intend to keep their products in the store.
Any other questions of David and the planning commission on their recommendation? Okay, David, thank you for your report. Now we'll turn to, to item number eight D, which is consider, consideration approval of the ordinance 2013-26 amending the zoning of this tract of property from C1, light commercial district to C2, general commercial district. What would you like to do with it?
I move to approve ordinance 2013-26.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance 2013-26. Will there be discussion? Seen none, votes in order? Roll call.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
No.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes. The motion, the ordinance does pass. Now we'll move to the emergency clause. Will there be a motion on the emergency?
Move to declare an emergency.
Second.
We have a motion second on the emergency, roll call please. None to debate.
Stroller.
No.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
No.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
No.
Hall.
Yes, five to three.
I know.
Yeah, emergency fails. Okay. We do have to go back and take care of one little piece of business, and that's the emergency clause on the ordinance 2013-27 changing the zoning on the On-Q City of Perry property. We failed to do the emergency.
So move.
We have a motion second on the emergency, roll call please.
Second.
Gordon.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
No.
Warner.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes, emergency passes.
Held your, held your breath.
Got in there though.
Okay, now we'll move to item number 10, which is consider approval of execution of functional building replacement cost form for the property casualty insurance purposes on Wee Hard Nutrition Building at 612 Flynn Street. Council members, O-MAG has just requested that we identify and prove this replacement value number of, what, 187 was my memory?
178,993.
Okay, 178,993. This is just to, to identify the replacement cost in the case of a disaster. It would be that or less. What would you like to do with it?
Move to approve.
Dave? Considering what we deal with around this table, this is pretty easy. We've got a motion and a second, will there be discussion? All right, seen none, we'll move to the.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.[1787.81]
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
You didn't want to reread that before we voted?
No. Item number 11, new business, any new business needs to come before the Perry City Council. New business, as you all know, or as information that came to us that was not available at the time of printing the agenda, and I actually have a piece of new business that I'd like to discuss with you today. Over the past four or five months, I have been interviewed and vetted and background-checked for a offering of a position with the Kansas City Federal Reserve Bank and their branch operations in Oklahoma City. Once that process was completed, and after talking with my family in great detail, in great detail, and after an enormous amount of prayer, I've decided to accept that position and that appointment to the Federal Reserve. The Federal Reserve, of course, is the central bank for this country, and they are not big fans of any political activity going on simultaneously. And so, they are requiring me, in order to take this position, to resign my position as mayor. Today, at about 10 o'clock, I turned in my letter of resignation to be effective December 31st, 2013, and will resign my position as mayor. I am glad that my wife is here, along with my daughter, in support of this. This has not been an easy decision for me. I would tell you this, and I'm sure there'll be time for me to pontificate in December on my experience as mayor of the city of Perry, but I will tell you that I very much enjoy being mayor of this community. I find it extremely gratifying. But there are times in our lives, not to get overly spiritual, Brett, that we are called to take a step of real faith. And I believe that this is a direction that I've been called to, and it doesn't include remaining politically active with the city of Perry and its day-to-day business. And so, really, for the first time in my life, I'm going to take a step of faith, and I am not going to question the reason that these things get put in front of me. It's truly an honor where I'm headed, and it's been a great honor where I've been. And I want to thank each and every one of you, we'll talk more about it as time goes on, the charter, if you're wondering. The mayor's position with our city charter is the only one that is not appointable. It will require a special election. When I vacate this office at the end of December, it will be up to this body, my guess is that you will work under your vice mayor for a period of time until the election can be called. I guess I can still make suggestions, as long as I'm serving in this capacity, and that would be to try to tie that election to the school election, because it won't cost you if you tie that to the school election, but that will be up to this body. So, I will save the tear-jerking remarks for another day, but Dixie has my letter, and my guess is that it wouldn't have taken long before it got out in the street, and I wanted you to hear it from me, and we'll just leave it for that, so how about that for some new business, huh? Okay, so now that the shocker's over, any other new business needs to be taken up with the Perry City Council? Seen none, we'll move to item number 12. Take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Take a motion, a second to adjourn, roll call please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Hall.